All right, we are live.
Good morning. My name is Chris Darcy. I'm the Chair of the Salem Public Art Commission. Today is September 26, 2022. This is a special public meeting, hearing convened by the Salem Public Art Commission for the purpose of reviewing a mural proposal at 1520 Woodrow Street Northeast. I am going to open the public hearing. It is 9:41 a.m. Are there, Keith, do I need to do introductions of the commission?
Yes, please.
Okay, let's begin with introductions, commissioners.
Spencer Hammer, Commissioner.
Susan Napack, Commissioner.
Back home, Commissioner.
And let's proceed with our guest, Counselor Nishiyoka. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Counselor for Ward Two, Lynda Nishiyoka.
Lynn, would you like to introduce yourself as a neighborhood association?
Yes, I'm Lynda Cotta, Chair of Northeast Neighbors.
Zach, did I skip you?
No, I introduced myself.
Okay. It's hard with these faces. How about our applicants this morning?
Good morning, my name is Jason Whitehurst. I am the Regional Operations Manager for Pacific Coast Producers Cherry Division.
And my name is Polly Newton. I'm helping with the process.
Good morning and welcome.
Yep, my name is Adam Sroff. I'm the Director of Labor Relations for Pacific Coast Producers. Thank you.
And what about Blaine?
Hello, I'm Blaine Fontana. I'm the artist, designer, and designer for this project.
I'm Keith Bondogwin, Staff Liaison to the Public Art Commission. And Mark?
My name is Mark Weinstein. I'm an Assistant City Attorney for the City of Salem, and I'm also the legal advisor to the Salem Public Arts Commission.
Welcome, everyone. Is there anyone on the Salem Public Art Commission who has a conflict of interest relationship with this project? All right, hearing none. I am going to turn things over to Keith, who will give the staff presentation on the proposed mural.
Thank you, Chairperson Darcy. I would like to first enter into the record. Exhibit one for SPAC hearing 9/26/22 to the, for the record. And that will be, I will show you that during the presentation. I'm going to email that as well to the people in attendance. I will share screen. Are you all able to see my the presentation?
Yes.
Perfect. Well, welcome everyone to the public hearing for Pacific Coast Producers. This is for a proposed public mural to be located at 1520 Woodrow Street Northeast. General location of the facility or the building is at 1520 Woodrow Street Northeast. It is zoned for industrial use, and the painting is to be installed on the south-facing facade of an industrial building. I would like to share with you. Sorry. Do you see the maps on the screen?
Yes.
This is the general location of the facility. You see that it's between the Fairgrounds and Fairgrounds Road. As I drop screen here, this is on Woodrow Street. The property is on the northeast corner at the intersection of the Railroad Avenue and Woodrow. And here is the building facade. Going back into my presentation. Oh, do you, what, what screen do you see? I'm sorry.
Your title page.
So not even this, the slide itself?
Not, it's minimized.
Okay.
Anybody else having a different view?
How's that one? Do you see the large full screen now?
No.
No.
Oh goodness. Okay, how about that?
Yes.
Better. Okay, great. So there we go. So it's at 1520 Woodrow Street Northeast. It's zoned for industrial use. Here is the facade of the building with measurements. And here is the Salem Cherries mural design.
We're not seeing the images advanced, at least I'm not.
Oh, okay. One second.
There we go.
Is this clear?
Now we're looking at the facade with the measurements, not the design itself.
And it's not full screen, Keith.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's work on this. My apologies.
I think you're in the right screen if you hit the.
How's that?
We'll get the location slide now.
Okay, there you go.
Now, now we're at 1520 Woodrow Street Northeast.
Perfect, okay. Thank you. So this is the dimensions of the wall provided by Pacific Coast Producers. The artwork to be applied to the face wall only, not including the two storage tanks. And the dimensions are about 26 feet by 120 feet. This is the Salem Cherries mural design to encompass the entire face of that building structure. Now, there are two sets of requirements outlined within Salem Revised Code Chapter 15, as well as the conditions for approval in the Salem Public Art Commission Guidelines, Policies, and Procedures. What I will do is walk through the guidelines and requirements, criteria, and how they match up with the applicant's application. So the public mural in our Salem Revised Code 15.010 definition defines a public mural, which means an original two-dimensional work of art or visual art comprised of paint, ceramic, or glass tiles, or terracy, executed by hand directly upon or fixed directly to an exterior wall of a building, which has been approved by the Salem Public Art Commission and accepted by the city into its public art collection pursuant to this chapter. A public mural is not an original work of visual art if it is mechanically reproduced or computer-generated and printed on a base that will be attached to the wall, such as by way of illustration but not limitation, limited images digital printed on vinyl. SRC 15.070 reveals intent of the mural program. The intent and purpose is to, one, enhance the aesthetics of the city, two, provide avenues for original artistic expression, three, encourage community participation in the creation of original artwork, and four, reducing the incidence of graffiti, another crime. SRC Chapter 15 mandatory criteria is made up of six minimum standards. First is to remain in place for not less than seven years. It can be installed only on nonhistoric, non-contributing buildings. It cannot be placed on residential buildings. It cannot include electrical or moving components or lights. The location must be accessible to the public, and the property owners must convey an easement to the city. There are 11 SPAC guidelines, criteria listed within the guidelines, and they range from listing the strength or to demonstrate the strength of the artist's concept, originality, a craftsmanship of the artist, appropriateness of scale to the wall, the appropriateness of scale to the neighborhood, architectural, geographical, socio-cultural, and/or historical relevance of mural to the site. Do we have support from owner, neighborhood businesses? We need to evaluate the ability to complete mural on time, non-budget. Like I said, it can only be placed on nonhistoric, non-contributing buildings. It cannot be on single-family duplexes or multifamily dwellings. It is not to include electrical or moving components or lights, and the location again must be accessible to the public. What, in these next few slides, I will be, I reviewed the application based upon and compared it to the standards. The first one, remain in place for not less than seven years. Legaled is working to finalize an easement to this effect. This is not a, in a historic district, and it is not a residential building, so they meet those qualifications. There are no electrical moving components or lights in prescribed for this installation. There are no, it is visible to the public from Woodrow Street Northeast and the railroad line 24/7, as well, the easement agreement is currently being drafted as enlisted, as I said before. Now, regarding the SPAC guidelines or guidelines, procedures, and policies, the strength of the artist's concept has been demonstrated as original work. Blaine has, is an accomplished artist, and he has history of mural work in Salem, the downtown area. The scale of the painting appropriately encompasses the wall of the building, and it is located in general industrial zone and with tall buildings appropriate for the neighborhood. Additional criteria for the public mural, according to the SPAC guidelines and policy and procedures, the design celebrates local farms, fruit production, and the rich history of Oregon cherry growers. We received public comment from the Northeast Neighborhood Association, neighboring businesses and residents, and the artist has a history of finishing projects on time and on budget. Just to review, it is not in historic district. There are no electrical or moving components or lights, and the location is accessible to the public. There was a comment period between August 26 and September 22, 30 years prior to this meeting. Letter of support for the Northeast Neighborhood Association Chair Lynda Cotta included 15, 56 attendees that vote, that agreed that were in support of the mural. We received a letter of support from Mayor Chuck Bennett, nine emails and one phone message, all in support. There have been no testimony received not in support of this mural. The council or the commission has three alternatives to decisions to make. One is to approve the proposal as submitted by the applicant as indicated in the drawings, exhibit one. They can approve the proposal with conditions to satisfy specific guidelines or deny the proposal based on non-compliance with guidelines in SRC 15 and indicate which guidelines are not met and the reasons the guideline is not met. That concludes my presentation, staff's presentation. Are there any questions for me? Hearing none, I will defer to the Chair.
Great, thank you, Keith. I would, oh, I'm sorry. Does someone have a question?
I'm sorry, Keith, can you, can you stop sharing your presentation, please?
Yes.
Susan, question?
Sorry, actually, I did have a question. In, in the in the beginning of the presentation, it did say something that the mural was not going to include the silo, painting on the silos, which is in one of the illustrations that we did see. The mural was going to go right onto that and be kind of incorporated into it. Is that not the case now? Where the silos are not going to be painted at all?
Correct. At this point in time, the applicant provided clarity to not include the, the storage tank at this time. Current mural code allows it to be placed on the building facade and not on structures at this moment in time.
Is that something that might be included in the future? Because they're just big white canisters, right, that are
Correct.
Right in front, and the mural is going to go behind it? Or is it going to stop before those, that starts there?
May, may I suggest that we allow the applicant to make their presentation, and then we can post questions following that? If there's no objection, I would, I would welcome the applicant presentation from Pacific Coast Producers.
No, that's, sorry, thanks, Chris.
Go ahead, Jason.
Oh, good morning. Thank you all for your time. As you've seen the mural that, you know, was submitted, Willamette Cherry Growers, Oregon Cherry Growers, and now Pacific Coast Producers has a rich history here in Salem, being founded here in 1932. And we are looking at this mural as a way to celebrate Pacific Coast Producers, the cherries in the Cherry City of Oregon. And the mural concept was designed to capture both art history and the history of cherries in the Willamette Valley.
And then, if I may address Susan's specific question, our original intent was to incorporate those, those tanks into the overall project. But due to our, also, our, our intent to also comply with all applicable rules and, and be good citizens, we are trying to go through it properly and, and officially. So we're saying, hey, well, we can do that after the fact, if, if, if permitted. But right now, our focus is on, on the building and getting that done efficiently and properly. So then, and then we could address that after the fact. But that is, that is our, our ultimate goal.
Polly, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to answer your question thoroughly. Yes, the mural would go and cover the entire wall, so it would be behind the silo and then, oh, we're going to apply, and it's to move forward with maybe something on the silo, but not right now.
And would you, as applicants, are, are you, have you finished what you would like to present this morning? Okay, are there questions? Any quest, more questions from the commission?
Could, could we, can I see the image just one more time? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I guess I only have one question. I, I like the imaging. I just, there's nothing, I guess this is Mark or Keith. There's no, this isn't considered as advertising in any way, is it? Or is there any issue with that, if it were seen as, as that? I just want to make sure that that's not something that we're running afoul of.
That would be a question for the commission to decide whether or not.
There's nothing that speaks directly to that, is there? I didn't see that.
That would be, that would be a Commissioner Hall, that would be a decision for the commission to make that, as proposed, whether or not you feel that this is an artistic rendering.
Got it.
I certainly feel that it is an artistic rendering.
So I, I, may I, I'm sorry, I'm not able to see everybody because of this. So, all right. Chairperson, may I?
Go ahead and take it down. Yeah, I just want to see it again. You can remove it.
Chairperson, I, I think that there's a, if I could propose, the staff report discusses a recommendation to approve the proposed artwork. There is, there were, there was some clarification made as to what the proposed artwork is, and I think that that has been incorporated into exhibit one, which was sent. Has all of the commissioners and everyone present received what's been proposed as exhibit one? Have you not mailed that out, Ms. Keith?
I'm doing that now.
Yeah, I don't have it yet.
Yeah. You just a moment.
Yep. So the updated exhibit one does not include the artist's rendering to include the, the tanks. The original Cherry, Salem Cherries mural design, if you can see, did not include the Pacific.
Here we go.
Do you have, do you have exhibit one as a packet you could share on the screen?
Yes, I do.
What I think exhibit one does not indicate is the mural on the wall and the, any treatment or no treatment of those tanks.
Are you able to share that? There we go.
Yes, sir.
So city staff this morning, together with based on conversations that we recently had, prepared exhibit one, which has been reviewed by the applicant. This is the written description of the artwork. I'll, I'll leave this, if you can leave this up for a moment, keep so all in attendance have an opportunity to review this. Can we advance to page two? And as specified in here, the dimensions listed on this include the artwork being applied directly to the wall face, not the tanks. And then page three, please. If you can make that larger. So it's the city's understanding that the applicant's current phase of this mural project, what is being sought today is what's encapsulated in this exhibit one, which is this image being applied directly to the wall face. That is what is being, the city's understanding of what's being applied to as for today, and I would ask the commission, when it considers its motion, that it accept exhibit one into the record for today's hearing. We have, we have obviously a copy of it, which will be maintained with this hearing record, and that this exhibit one be the description of the artwork that is in full, that is being considered by the commission today for approval as acceptance into the Salem's Public Art Collection as a mural.
Is there any objection to that, commissioners? All right, hearing none.
Can we make comments? Is that, is it time for comment from commissioners?
Yes, are you?
I think we need to have a motion on the floor, and then comments about the motion.
And would that motion be to accept exhibit one as the final design proposal and description?
Why don't we? The motion would be to accept, to accept the applicant's artwork proposal as set forth in exhibit one of today's hearing conditioned upon the applicant granting to the city an easement in a form acceptable to the city attorney.
Can I hear a motion to that effect from a commissioner? One of you could say so, move.
Yeah, I'm, I'm if we accept this in a format that's acceptable to the city attorney.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Discussion? Susan?
Um, if I'm understanding correctly, the, the, a, a large portion of the left side of the mural is going to be obscured by the tanks. And seeing that there's the image of the Capitol Building there, is, if that's what it looks like, plus the, the, the kind of cherry baskets and, and, you know, that it really, there's a cohesiveness also to this entire design, and if those are not, if the, those tanks are not going to be incorporated into the mural, it seems, I don't, I'd like to hear from the artist how he feels about the integrity of the design of the mural if that whole left side is obscured by white tanks.
May I just clarify, Mark? Are we voting simply at this point to accept exhibit one? And the other pieces of the motion before we get into the discussion about the mural itself?
You're, you're discussing whether or not to accept the mural into the Salem Public Arts collection with the mural being as defined in exhibit one.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Susan raises a good question about the tanks actually obscuring, you know, at, at least 20% of the proposed work. Maybe I would pose a question to the applicants. I know that there is interest in moving forward with this project. I guess none of us, at least I was not aware of the tank issue until this morning. It does seem like, at least, you know, a core piece of the, of this is going to be not visible. Is there a plan moving forward to deal with some visual treatment of the tanks so that this piece would be fully enjoyed? Like painting them, you know, in the future?
Yes, we already have artistic renderings prepared and completed for the tanks, which incorporate or mirror the, the, the building, which would display the trees, the sky, et cetera.
Thank you for that. And what's, what's the timing for that next spring?
We had, we had originally hoped to get it done now, and then just recently realized along with, with everyone else that our application didn't contemplate or didn't effectively address the tanks, and so we're, we're having to pivot a bit and, and potentially do that in the spring, yes.
So the tech, the tanks would be painted in the spring? Or, or the whole project would happen in the spring?
I think just the tanks. We're hoping to still get the building done immediately.
So then you would just duplicate that image onto the tanks, and you'd still have that full face covered with this image?
Correct, but I, I can defer to Blaine to a comment further on that, too.
Great, Blaine?
Yes, yeah, essentially, that's how the other design was done. It's just, all it's doing, it's, it's echoing what's from behind the tanks. The other concern that was brought up with the silhouette of the state Capitol, been the left side, and kind of been obstructed from the tanks. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, you know, hesitant to mention like editing in any of this right now after kind of getting approval. And I have, like, you know, this has to be run through the company as well, but that's all I could really say. I mean, as far as That's all I could really say. I mean, as far as like the, yeah, the, the state capital, um, it would be peeking out on the far left corner still. Um, but as far as like, you know, it's not within my, like, kind of like, uh, ability right now to, like, officially say to edit this right now, or even say I can. Um, as far as flipping that to the silhouette is, is, you know, a little more pronounced on the right side, so.
I, I think having it on the tanks in the future kind of alleviates that issue.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, alright.
Yeah. Other comments or questions?
Counselor, I appreciate that as a question, yeah.
Yes, thank you. This question is directed to Mark, um, Mark, the rules and regulations that I saw indicated. That it needed to be on the flat surface, so does that mean that some? Regulations will need to be changed before the silos could be painted?
Thank you. Figure counselor, uh, to be clear, the, the city was. Under the understanding that this was going to be applied to face wall and had put together a description of the artwork reflecting that, that was. Discussed with the applicant. Um, and looking at this closer, there was some. Clarification that was requested about how this was going to be applied in relationship to our code. Our code specifically says that murals need to be applied to wall, to building walls, um. And so that's why we were under the impression that this was going to be applied to the building. I want to caution, um, to the, to the. To the commission about, um. Accepting this mural upon an expectation of certain things occurring in the future. We had a discussion with the applicant about what staff was in a position to support at this time. Which was this image being applied to the wall of the building, not. Incorporating the tanks, that if they wanted to proceed it. With it incorporating the tanks as well in this phase. That staff needed some additional time to external, to internally vet. How that would apply under our codes. And the applicant said that they would like to proceed forward with this being applied to the wall. To specifically answer your question, counselor. I don't know if that being done with the tanks will require a change to our codes or could be done currently. Um, staff was not able to address that issue at the point that we realized the, the concern. And meet the timeframes of proceeding with this hearing, which was set up in order so that the applicant can move forward with this before the fall rains hit. So, in light of that concern, I believe the applicant is wanting to go forward at this time. This is what is before the, the commission, um. I understand that the applicant is wanting to do additional things, um. That will have to be explored under our code as to how that would be regulated and if it could be done within the confines of chapter fifteen. Or if it might include other aspects of our code. Uh, I don't know if I explained that very well, but the long and short of it is. Staff has not had an, from the time that we realized that issue, staff has not had a time. To resolve that issue, so we said to the applicant. Staff support was understood on it, based on it being applied to the wall face. That if you want to incorporate the tanks, we would need additional time to explore that to see if we can support that. Or not, applicant chose to move forward with this image being applied solely to the wall face, not including the tanks. Does that answer your question, Commissioner? I'm sorry for such a long-winded discussion.
No, I think, I think that that is important here, that there needs to, that the review. Um, needs to happen and that everything needs to be in place, that the silos. Could eventually, and that's kind of the key word, they may not if they don't meet the code, or does the code have to get changed? I think that's the only thing I wanted to make sure. That I understood and everyone else did, so thank you.
And thank you, counselor, for making that point much more clearly than I did.
Other comments?
Um, I'd, I'd like to hear from, um, Blaine about how he feels. About, uh, the fact that, that there might not be permission in the future to incorporate the design onto the. The tanks and that, you know, there might be that. It might be obscured completely, whether. He would, you know, I don't even know how this would work, whether he would consider having the mural stopped right before. The tanks and so that the whole design would be sort of condensed horizontally so that you could see the full mural. Um, I don't know whether that would require stopping this process, which would be really unfortunate, whether there's a way that we could. You know, prove it as a kind of a shorter. Mural and that, that, that white, you know, the white tanks and the white wall would sort of be the stopping point for it, the mural, that would just be. You know, just wondering how he feels about the design.
May I, uh. Respond a couple of things so that we can have the appropriate, uh, robust discussion. Uh, I think it's important, uh, Chair Darcy, if I couldn't, Commissioner Napack, I didn't mean to cut off your question. Um. The commission obviously has the authority to make amendments to the motion as to what it's approving. And can have this discussion with the artist as to, to fully decide what it wants to approve, but I want to be clear. That what is ultimately approved. Is what is approved by the commission, and if there's going to be quote unquote revisions. That would need to be approved through a public hearing process. By the commission, the applicant can choose, yeah, to withdraw its application based on what's. Being approved here, but once approved, that is the mural that is to be applied. And it can't be revised post-approval without a subsequent. Public hearing by this commission.
But we can, but we're still discussing right now, Susan's question can still be asked, right? Maybe we can stall here.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Other comments?
So what, so Blaine, what do you think about? The possibility that this may just be the final. Mural, nothing happens to the tanks, or are you comfortable?
Really hasn't to say anything about, yeah, about, about this now. Cause as, you know, as important it is for this, for this design to be approved on, uh, being that this is on, you know, on, like, gonna be on the record here. Um. And thanks, Mark, for, yeah, kind of elaborating, uh, this further with the, with their vote here, uh. Yes, I mean, I would, I mean, I would love just to, more than nothing to see the, uh, the silos also, also rendered, it creates this kind of very unique, um, dynamic. Insulation to it, that's kind of like other, other two-dimensional murals, and I think that was really kind of interesting and very, seductive and what would draw people in. Uh, but this kind of interesting three-dimensional, uh, way, um. In the meantime, as we are only, this, it's like, you know, not officially on the books, but. The ve- the mural, as it needs to be approved, needs to go all the way to the other side of the wall. I. I would not, that's what I would also advocate, it wa- I think, you know, doing any edits like by, 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 um, by compressing it. I think it would look odd, and I think it would just call out more attention. So I think it's just more important to, to stick with the one that we have that's being reviewed and for approval. Um, and we can cross the path, the bridge with the silos down the road.
Thank you, Blaine. I, I heartily agree with you. Other com- other comments or questions?
Sorry, I'm, I'm just, I just want to ask, this is really directed to the commission about. I'm looking at the Pacific Coast Producers website and looking at some of the other, there's some other of these murals that have been done in various places like Woodland, for example. Um, which does not have the business name, at least as far as I can tell on the image, the one in Lodi and Stockton does have the business name. So I guess my question for, that I'm just asking is, you know. Are we establishing any kind of precedent for ourselves around the inclusion of business names in murals going forward? And, and is everyone comfortable with that? Or is this, are we gonna, are we comfortable revisiting that issue with any future proposal? I could imagine scenarios where, you know, we might find that the inclusion of the business name was. Compromise the artistic. You know, integrity of the mural. I don't necessarily feel that that's true here, but I just, I want to raise the issue because. I think there is probably some line between when you're including business names in artwork. You are drifting towards advertising. Again, I'm of the personal opinion that. You know, blank walls covered with attractive artwork are better than blank walls left not covered with attractive artwork, and so I don't. Want to let the perfect be the enemy of the good, but I want to, you know, I want to raise that issue and see if anyone else. Has that as a, does that bring any bells for anybody, or is everyone comfortable with? Business names and artwork being coming up?
I'm, I am not, um, I'm comfortable with it, especially given the size of the typography. But I also, I want to make sure I recognize Lynn Takata, who was asked for an opportunity to comment from the Neighborhood Association. May I rec- may I recognize her now?
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate that. Um, this is a little wrinkle I hadn't anticipated today, but. When we showed the design to our Neighborhood Association, we had a complete picture that in, that showed the silos integrated, so we weren't aware of. Uh, as everyone else was of this wrinkle, but as a professional artist, I think that, um, including the silos. Really extends the artwork and integrates it more into the site. If the silos are left blank, they're going to. You know, disrupt the enjoyment of the mural, so if this comes up in the future, uh, we would be happy to support. Including the mural, uh, over the silos. Thank you.
Let's go back to Zach's question, um. About whether the placement of the business name is, constitutes advertising. In, in my opinion, it does not in this, in this case. Um, and I would be happy to consider it. You know, as a, in the consideration of other murals, I don't believe it's relevant really here.
Uh, I guess my question would be for Mark, um. What if in a future mural, someone comes with, uh, business name? Are we still able to deny it if it is? Or is there caught like an argument since we've allowed it before, because I know in other city processes like with building. If something's been allowed, there is. Um, a fair argument and almost always tend to allow it moving forward. My recommendation to the commission would be to look at your criteria for approval. And decide if what is represented in this particular proposed mural, which is this image that's before you on the screen. As applied to the wall face of the building. If you feel that it meets the criteria and constitutes a work of art. That is the best guidance I can give. I, I don't, I think if that is what you're looking at, you know. Whether or not what you have before you is a piece of art. Versus a. Non-artistic. Display. Based on what has been proposed and/or otherwise doesn't meet the criteria, then. You should vote accordingly if you feel that despite the inclusion of a particular image. Or a particular representation or particular words that it still is. Meets the criteria, then you should vote accordingly.
Alright.
So, does that help? I, I think that kind of clears that up a little bit.
Yeah, I'm going to translate that as take each proposal as we find it based on its merits and that we're not, we're not held to any kind of. Uh, uh, except to the extent we feel like we are, we're not held to any kind of precedent in this decision-making process, so, yes.
Um, in terms of process, my, may I ask if there are people who wish to provide additional public testimony regarding this project? Keith, are, are there people who have been, who have indicated to you that they wish to provide public testimony?
No.
Okay. And I, I would also just like to state for the record that in, as this project has been put forth. And promoted on social media, that I have seen a, a vast majority of extremely positive. Uh, comments regarding it and the ability of something like this to really enliven, uh, the part of Salem where it's located. I just want to make sure that I'm sticking to the protocols for public hearings, so Keith and Mark, please keep me on the right track here. Are there any additional questions for staff regarding the proposal? Hearing, seeing none, um, or would the applicant like to make any additional comments? Uh, any of the three of you, and I can't see everybody's face because I'm looking at my, the, uh, the rendering of the mural, here we go. Anything from, um, Pacific Coast, Coast Producers?
No, thank you.
Okay. Um, alright, at this point, I, unless there are any additional questions or any further comment, I am going to close the public hearing. Alright, and with that, I would call for a motion on the. Proposed, uh, mural at fifteen twenty Woodrow Street Northeast.
Chair Darcy, I believe you already have a motion that's, uh, been seconded and that was what the discussion was about.
Okay.
I think at this time that, um, it would be appropriate unless there's any additional comment or discussion to bring it to vote.
Alright, all those in favor of approving the mural for fifteen twenty Woodrow Street as presented this morning? Uh, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion to approve the mural has passed. With that, I, unless there is further business to come before us, I am going to close the public hearing. This morning at ten twenty-eight AM. Alright, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing more about this project.
Appreciate it.
And let us know when it's going to be started so we can get out there and support you and watch, see what's going on, let the neighborhood associations know, too.
Will do.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for a lot of time.
Thanks.
Thank you.